So I don't know if we really need to call this. It's a goal-setting workshop this morning. It's a continuation of a process that was started about a month ago, six weeks ago.
Three weeks ago.
And today, we're going to take some input from the city council to go along with the input that we got from the public. And Adrian, I'll, I think I'll let you get this started off.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. So on March 2nd, we had a workshop in our council chambers to kick off this process. And that entailed a community participation component that community members got to come and basically do the same exercise that you will be doing today, coming up with goals and doing a ballot on them to rank them in priority order. So you were all present at that workshop and got that feedback, and then you were given a homework assignment a couple of weeks back with that information and to also come up with your own priorities. And so, we're going to go through that process today. I've seen some preliminary information, and you know, when we did this process two years ago, I think we had about thirty or so goals that you were, you had to then vote on. This time around, it's a much more focused effort, and so I'm really pleased to see that. One thing that is a little bit different is we have a number of goals grouped in, for example, water or Main Street planning. And so, within those groups, there are some significant projects that need to be done or need to be considered. So Bill and Mike will talk more about that, but overall, it's a much more focused effort, and I think it'll be a good process to really identify what it's going to take to reach some of these goals that are so important to this community.
Does a gentleman want to make a comment?
No, we don't really want to hear from you yet. Yeah, I just, we're having a hard time hearing everybody in this room. It's a little different. All right, we'll try and speak up. Yeah.
Talk loud.
Thank you.
Talk louder.
Mike just asked me to talk louder, which is usually not a concern or a feedback notice that I get, but can you hear me pretty well back there? Mike and I are delighted to be back in Willets and help assist the council in setting important goals for the next two years. Just a little background about the process, and really, it's about linking the most important, highest priority things to accomplish for the Willets community with the resources that are necessary to do that. And that's the link to the budget process, but then, we need to make sure we've set and identified what those most important things are as we build the process, and that means starting with the council, the elected leadership of the community, leading the way by identifying top priorities. There is a tendency to think that if you engage in this type of goal-setting process when times are tough, well, what's the purpose of asking people, what are the things you want to do, and we don't have any money to do them? My answer to that would be, when times are tough, it's even more important to make sure that you focus on your top priorities, because you have fewer resources to accomplish them, and you want to make sure those limited resources are being directed towards the most important, highest priority things to accomplish. And so, this is kind of a four-step process, if you will, that we've proposed and recommended to the city, and at the heart of that is council goal-setting. But before the council sets those goals, they need to have information to do that, what the status of current programs and projects, community outreach, what does the community think are important things to do, what's the city's fiscal condition, what's your resource capacity? And take that goal-setting input, which the council can consider for a meeting like today, that's going to lead to the development of work programs, to better define what are the specific tasks and resources to accomplish those goals, and then that ultimately feeds into the 2015-16 budget. And as the city manager indicated back on March 2nd, council held a workshop to kind of deal with those input issues, what's the status of what we're currently working on, what's our fiscal condition, and what are some thoughts from the community. But now, we're here today, we're kind of that blue diamond, if you will, for the council now, to take that information and identify and set goals for the coming year. So that's the purpose of today's workshop, identify the highest priority, most important things for the city to achieve over the next two years. No guarantee on this, but in our experience, this process is likely to result in kind of three tiers, if you will, of priorities. At the top of that are what we call major city goals, those are really the most important, highest priority things to accomplish. In the next tier are other important objectives, and then, kind of the third tier at the base is address as resources permit. So what does that mean? That means, for the major city goals, top priorities, and the staff will develop detailed work programs for the council's consideration as part of this goal-setting and budget process. The other two categories, other important objectives, would be good if we could accomplish these, if at all possible, and then the third category is, you know, addresses as resources permit. If within the existing resources we have, maybe this isn't a really tough goal to accomplish, and so, we can do it if we have the resources available. So just a brief review, and I know you have agendas on your seats, this brief overview of the, of the process, and then we're going to review the goals that the council has already submitted. They did their homework assignment, we're not going to start today with a blank piece of paper, the council's already given thoughts to this, and we already have goals on the, on the menu, so to speak. But one of the things Mike's going to do is take those goals the council presented and work through and make sure, not that we're going to say they're high priorities or low priorities, but let's just make sure we're clear on what the goal is. You might decide now that it's very clear, I'm really not supportive of that at all, but we will have accomplished that part to at least make sure that the goal is clear. We have a suggested process for how the council can prioritize those. We'll take a quick break in order to tabulate that, and we'll come back and talk about and identify those major city goals, opportunity for public comment, what else should the council be considering as part of the budget process, and then sort of wrap up where to from here. So, for the rest of today, so to speak, there's really kind of three key steps, and the first one is to review the goals that have been submitted for clarity. What we've done, and you have this in your handouts, is we've taken all of the goals that were submitted by the council for consideration, thirty-three of them, and organized them kind of by theme, or what seemed an obvious grouping. For example, water issues are obviously a concern for a number of council members, as is the post-bypass Willets. And what we've done is taken a stab at what each of the council members expressed, for example, on the bypass, and we've taken a stab at what we think a consolidated goal might look like that takes those into account, but that's just our stab, we're going to work with the council to make sure that it does, in fact, reflect the thinking. And before we get to the council ranking the goals, we'll work through and try and achieve some consensus on what the goal means. We'll finalize that menu for ranking by the council, and then there'll be a process for the council to rank and prioritize those goals. And here's how we recommend doing that, sort of like American Bandstand, you know? Has a good beat, I can dance to it, I'll give it an eight. We're suggesting that there's a scale of four to zero, four being the most important, highest priority things for the council to achieve, three would be an important goal to achieve, all the way down to zero, the council doesn't really, that member doesn't really think this is an important priority at all. The key to this working is, you can't give a four to everything, and so, our suggestion is you limit the total number of points that the council has to allocate, and our suggestion is about two points per menu goal. As you'll point out, we received thirty-three goals in total from council members, because we asked them to give us up to seven, so we knew we wouldn't have more than thirty-five to begin with, and we have thirty-three. But when you look at overlapping concerns and issues, we were only going to have thirteen things to really consider, because almost all of these issues, there was overlapping council interest about, about that goal. So we have kind of thirteen things to consider, we'll work on what's a good description of that goal, we'll give council members two points, so they'll have twenty-six points in total to allocate against that, and so that'll mean if there's some things that are some fours, then they're going to have to give some ones and some twos, because they don't have enough points to give everything a four. Because if we walked away from here and all thirteen things were top priorities, I think we will lose some sense of focus of what are the most important things to do. So this process, I think, helps keep us focused on that, and we have a recommended process and approach for doing that. So what happens after today, the next step will be for the staff to go back for those major city goals and prepare work programs about that in terms of key action steps, what kind of resources will we need, how long is it going to take, what department is responsible for achieving the goal, and those would council will consider as part of the upcoming, upcoming budget process. And then after the budget's adopted, ongoing reporting of how are we doing in accomplishing these goals as the year goes by, and then recognizing that, you know, we're making assumptions today about what challenges are going to be, you know, events will begin to replace that. I know two years ago, the worst drought in California history was not really on the radar, and that's obviously something that the council has had to deal with, because that's a really important item that has surfaced, and that'll undoubtedly happen with some similar challenges. So, ongoing reporting so you can be flexible and make changes that are necessary based on changed circumstances. And then kind of the last thought I want to leave is, goal-setting that happens today is the start of the process, it's not the end, there's still major city goal work programs, may not happen in April, maybe early May, but they'll certainly get prepared in April, and then there'll be preliminary budget hearings in May and June. So this isn't the end of the process, this is the start of the process. And with that, if the council has any questions about kind of the next steps in this process, then I'm actually going to turn it over to Mike, and we'll start on that process of kind of working through the goals and making sure we have a good understanding of those.
I think, any questions over here? We're good to go.
Ready to rock and roll, thank you. Before I get up there and we start looking at these goals, I just, first of all, want to thank you again for inviting us up to help you with this goal-setting, and I want to compliment you, as I have before, but particularly today, on acknowledging you have a great staff that's very dedicated and talented and hardworking, and it's been a pleasure working with them.
Louder, please.
Okay. They have a good staff that works hard, they're efficient, and talented. So I just want to reiterate a couple of things before we get started on this, that the purpose, again, is to focus limited resources. This is a small town, a small city, and you have some very important undertakings that you're about, that you are engaged in and have to continue to work on. And often, the greatest impediment to getting things done is having too many things to do at the same time, and you need, with limited resources, to pick those things where you really want to put those resources, whether it's time, attention, political will, money, staff, are the things that are really, need the most attention from you. And as Bill pointed out, there's a very strong consensus already amongst the council members. When we were here two years ago, you came up with a couple of dozen possible goals. This time, it was only about a dozen, it was thirteen. So already, it seems like the council's moving along on the same track. So, without further ado, then, let's go through these, these are in the handouts that you have, I think everybody in the audience has them too? Very good. Okay. So what this, I just want to explain what we have here. What these are, are just verbatim what the council submitted to us. We asked each of the council members to give us up to seven of their top goals, and these are the ones that we got that we thought were related to planning for Willets once the bypass is complete. We also noticed that some of these, they might have been listed as separate goals, but they seem to fit into this one notion of some kind of comprehensive planning of how is the community going to plan for and cope with this significant change when the bypass opens. So just quickly, continue to develop plans for the city after the bypass opens, develop the Main Street revitalization plan, Main Street downtown improvement, post-bypass downtown improvements, post-bypass planning improvements, you can see, everybody has this on their radar. A specific one was an easy-off, easy-on attractive sign that would be placed at the interchanges to help direct passersby into town to take advantage of Willets' services, and advise them that it's easy to get in, easy to get out, and there are things that they can do and/or buy here. That seemed like, in terms of a comprehensive analysis or planning for post-Willets bypass, that that could be included in that, that it's not only just what's happening downtown, but also how are we treating the interchanges as well. So we combine these, Bill, if we can show the, into this. Develop and begin implementing a comprehensive public improvement and economic development plan, anticipating when the bypass is completed, focusing first on Main Street and downtown, but eventually considering other areas of the sound, because it's city, because it needs to be comprehensive. And again, congratulations on getting your Caltrans grant, which actually moves this forward right away. Rod and Adrian, particularly, good work. Identify the scope of improvements that Caltrans will implement when relinquishment of Main Street occurs. Assess the likely effects of decreased traffic on businesses and on your tax revenues. Continue working with the Main Street Merchants Group and the Chamber of Commerce, and really other community groups. They were very helpful, I understand, in supporting the application of Caltrans and the success that you achieved there. Work with Caltrans and property owners near the bypass interchanges, to site design and install signage, informing travelers of the services, as I mentioned before, and identify specific projects for improving the streetscape circulation, public safety and infrastructure, as well as possible business assistance programs. So that's a mouthful, but they're all elements of what needs to be done in terms of a comprehensive plan for the post-bypass. So our question first to the council, is this reasonable language that captures your intent? Do you want to make any changes to that?
I'm good with it. Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. Let's go on to the next one. This was another one in which all five council members put one or more items that were related to water, and one of the council members described it as water security, and that seemed to strike us as a particularly good way of expressing it, and that there were elements of this that included supply, infrastructure projects, and simultaneously, conservation. So here were the items that were listed by the council members. The emergency water system needs to be completed, there's a sequo process that needs to be done so that it can be integrated into the Willets water system, almost identical suggestion, the emergency water project will require environmental analysis, we also need to forecast for additional sources, comprehensive conservation outreach program is part of that, the Little Lake aquifer is part of your potential supply, your groundwater supply, those steps need to be taken to protect it from uncontrolled overuse and encroachment by outside agencies, aggressive water conservations would be part of this, and then from an infrastructure standpoint, Main Street water line, which is ongoing, that needs to be done, the relining of the large tank, another council member explicitly said the Main Street water line, and one council member listed those things, but said, I'm not going to make those separate because they're part of what we're doing already, and we felt that would be good to put that in there as part of this large water security goal. So we took these elements and put them into this language, and again, this is a long one, but it's an important one. It seems like, if I could be, give you my opinion, which is not worth very much, because I don't live here or have a business here, but it seems like water and planning for your post-downtown, or bypass, pretty important, and that was reflected that all of you put those on your list. So we said, complete the emergency system and the environmental assessment for its full integration of the city water system, forecast water demand, identify existing supply capacity and assess possible additional supply options, identify and implement measures to protect, protect the Little Lake aquifer, implement high priority infrastructure projects, including specifically the Main Street water line and the tank relining, and then concurrently develop and implement a comprehensive water conservation program for both residents and businesses, and assess the feasibility of city-sponsored programs related to retrofits of gray water systems. Does that capture?
I would just add one more thing to the tail end, under the water conservation programs, add in something about encouraging the residents to get rid of their grass lawns and use, what do you call it, zero-scape, you know, less water-consuming landscaping.
So landscaping, or plumbing retrofits, landscaping and gray water syst, or?
Yeah, we could, if we added landscaping.
Landscaping isn't quite the right word, but drought.
Yeah, well, drought-resistant landscaping, or something on that order, or zero-scape, I think they call it, or?
Zero-scape is going all the way to the extreme where there's no water use, that's your Phoenix, Tucson.
Yeah, right.
But, but yeah, but low water use.
Stormwater use?
Low.
Low.
Low water use.
Oh, low water use.
Landscaping. Low water use landscaping. Is that okay with all the other council members?
No.
Oh, okay, it's not.
People that already have yards and whatever planted are not going to rip them out and start again, so there has to be some happy leeway between that and, and I, my wife just happens to be that kind of a person, so.
Well.
Yes, I want to just say that.
The, the way it's worded is, assess the feasibility of these programs, so I think there would be flexibility for you to shape how you would present that to the community, so that you, I, I don't think the intent is to go in and start ripping out mature vegetation, but there may be instances where, you know, replacing your green lawn with some other kind of landscaping might make sense, and I don't, it doesn't sound like this would be necessarily regulatory, but maybe, I mean, again, this is up to you guys.
But we, we have a tiered water system, and so, the more that you use, the more that you pay, so consequently, if it's important to you and you spend more money on water, let's say, than your neighbor or some of the other people, and it's a priority to you, then you're going to pay for it. It's not like you're just, you know, everybody's paying the same, and some people are using a lot of water and some people are not using very much water. So that's kind of a something, in my estimation, that makes it more neutral for people, because there are people in the community, especially in my area of town, where the yards are very important to them.
How does the council want to proceed on that? Do you want to?
Well, it seems like this is going to be something we will be discussing in detail as we go forward.
Exactly.
So we probably don't have to get into the fistfight today.
What if we change city-sponsored programs related to water efficiency, or something like that, and took out the specifics, and you guys can argue the specifics at a later date?
I'm fine with that.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. So, yes.
What I was going to say is, just to reiterate, that this is for the purpose of identifying the various components of water that we would need to consider, whether it be a project or a policy development in the future, and so this doesn't give any approval to anything, just to incorporate all of those elements.
Okay, so we're going to take out the specific examples for today, and just put water efficiency as the goal, and then the specifics of what that entails for this community would be part of your assessment of this at a future time.
It would be part of the comprehensive conservation program.
Yeah, and the elements of it, then you guys can debate and get community input on the details, we're, we're not trying to design that today. Okay, let's move on to the next one, then. There were three council members that specifically spoke to economic development or job creation, work to develop and grow job-creating businesses in town, the government has a role in that, attract industry, post-bypass economic development, drawing new enterprises to Willets, and then there were some examples. So we combine these into prepare an economic development plan for retaining and attracting job-creating businesses appropriate to Willets, consider specifically appropriate and adequate zoning, as a planner, that's the first step, make sure you've got enough land for those things available, and that your zoning's not getting in the way, permit expediting, and the city's possible role in supporting entrepreneurial mentoring and financing for startups and expansions. Does that capture the idea? Anything you'd want to change?
He's good.
Mr. Mayor? Do you see, you have a furrowed brow.
I, I, no, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, next.
Are you attracted to that?
All right, this was another one in which there was strong support for this, four of the five council members mentioned it. Assess the formation of a new Parks and Recreation Special District. And so, again, explore the formation of a recreation district, encourage the formation of a park and rec district, create a 95490 Community Improvement District, formation of a Parks and Rec District. So everybody's got the same idea here, so it's pretty easy to write, whoops, a goal, prepare an assessment of requirements and the process for forming a new special district extending beyond the city limits that would help fund improvements, maintenance, and management of a variety of recreation-related facilities and services. If deemed desirable and feasible, identify the city's possible roles in facilitating the formation of such a district.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
It's innocuous enough.
Yeah, and that's what you got to do, if you, if this is important to.
That's where the pickleball goes.
Yeah. And this was one from two years ago that's still on the list of some of the council members, the Brown's Corner intersection improvements. Brown's Corner needs some sort of traffic help with a hospital opening, there will continue to be a growing number of vehicles using the intersection, and then simply Brown's Corner intersection. So, the goal would be, continue working with Caltrans to design and implement improvements to the Brown's Corner intersection, including the possibility of a roundabout. Okay?
Yeah.
It's good.
All right. Bike and pedestrian trail system, access to public property, trails around the enhancement ponds, the wastewater plant, access from the skate park or ball fields, recreational access into the watershed, rails with trails and identifying signage at the creeks, and then bicycle and pedestrian trails, trails with rails, again, explicitly called out. So we put this together as review the bicycle and pedestrian master plan and update to include trails in the city-owned watershed lands, as well as connections to and through the skate park and wastewater plant. Apply for additional transportation-related grants for the railroad right-of-way and other locations. The plan update should include specific implementation projects, including programs for appropriate signage. So again, this isn't whether you think this is your highest priority, but is the language clear and doesn't capture the idea from those who submitted that?
Yeah.
I think that we need to consider the part about using the watershed and the wastewater site plan around the ponds and stuff, as far as the access to get in there, and also, this is something that the council needs to be concerned about, is not to interrupt the, you know, the function of both of the wastewater plant and the water plant, with having people being, you know, able to get in there and do whatever they do. They've had a problem at the wastewater plant with people that wanted to come out and bird watch, which I think is a good idea, but it's just the facility able to get in there and some kind of guidelines that, so that they're not interfering with what's going on to make it all work.
So this, one of those is mine.
Yes.
And that is precisely what I would like to move forward, so assessing that, having access to public property that is public property but currently off limits.
What if we were to say, update to, assess appropriate public access to cities?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And that way, again, we're And that way, again, we're not trying to figure out the answer today, but that sets it up that you can think about what, what are these issues? So to include...
For appropriate public access right there?
To assess appropriate public access.
Okay.
So...
How...
Take trails out. Take trails out.
Include trails...
No, no trails. Take trails out.
Uh huh. Appropriate public access?
Assess appropriate public access.
Okay.
And take trails out, so that, is that okay then?
What, there is, my understanding is that the county is working on a trails program, so we might want to coordinate in some way with them. I mean, some of the points you have up there are strictly internal for Willets, but others might connect to the county plan. So I would suggest putting in something about coordinating with the county on the overall trail programs.
Is that okay to add that? We could just add, put another phrase in there, coordinate as appropriate with county planning.
Yeah, I, I think we could probably get rid of the appropriate signage.
Okay.
Last line.
Okay.
And say, include specific implementation projects and partnering with other agencies or something. I don't know.
Or, or how about coordinating with other agencies?
Yes, yeah.
Because partnering implies an additional step.
That's fine.
Go ahead, Ron.
Ron?
The only comment I would have is that access through the skate park area, I don't think would be the best, best route, so if you're going to include, I wouldn't include that specific.
Well, that's why you're saying assessing appropriate public access. So you, you get to, the council gets to decide with your input, when, if this becomes a goal, what is appropriate, if any?
Yeah, there's a difference between the raw wastewater portion of the plan.
Understood.
Right.
Enhance...
Everybody, I think everybody gets that.
And I'd be, since the one with a lot of herbage is mine, I would be fine with leaving it less specific. So watershed lands.
Okay.
As well as connections, and then delete, as well as connections to the wastewater plant site.
Okay.
I'm thinking the wetland site, the, the further pond, so I don't know what, the enhancement pond.
Right. So take out...
I think you can, at this point, you just, you just access to wastewater plant site.
Right.
I don't know that you're, I'm not sure it makes any difference one way or the other, but I think that you could, it's, it is premature to dictate...
Specify.
What kind of access you're going to be looking at for.
So let's take out this skate park.
I think the goal is just to try...
The goal is to have trails on public property.
Okay.
Access to property, that's the...
That's appropriate for that use.
Right.
As, as one council member, I'm against it.
Well, that's not what we're doing. You get to vote.
I'm just saying it, it's not going to get a 5-0, that's...
Well, that's...
I imagine it would...
Fly the stairs down from the biadum or elevator.
Okay, so, public access in the city-owned watershed lands as well as to and through the skate park and takeout and wastewater plant site?
No, opposite, takeout to and through the skate park.
Okay.
Probably just appropriate access, I think, is the...
So if you delete that...
Mm-hmm. I'm going to take this right, include...
As well as connections to, just take out and in that last sentence that you were on, connections to and, just take out the and, right before wastewater. Yeah.
Whoops. Whoops. Okay, the wastewater, apply for additional transportation-related grants, the plan should include specific implementation proj, projects and coordinated...
Coordination, coordination with other agencies.
Whoops. Be good if I could type.
It's fun to have somebody watch you type.
I often don't type on my knees either.
Thank you, that says what...
Okay.
I would like it to say.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, getting the language here doesn't mean you're voting for it necessarily. We're just clarifying the goal. Okay, onward.
Save that, make sure you...
Yeah, make sure you save that one. Okay, the Bechtel Road and Railroad Avenue connection. One council member, I still believe is a critical solution to our traffic circulation issues, and other transportation grid improvements, especially Railroad Avenue, Bechtel Road connection. So the goal is assess the route options for a connector between Bechtel Road and Railroad Avenue, considering land acquisition options, costs and funding sources, environmental impacts, and neighborhood concerns, finalize the preferred alignment, and begin acquiring right-of-way depending on funding availability. That's the goal.
I think it might be appropriate to put something in there about assessing the need after the bypass opens. I mean, I think that's one of the key elements, you know, why some of the council members have kind of pulled back from that from the last time. Let's wait and see what happens after the bypass opens.
Would that, I don't know if that changes the goal or changes your vote.
No, it doesn't change it, it just changes the priority, I suppose.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that you take care of with your right buttons.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, my only, I'd like to, when we have this discussion about north-south traffic circulation improvements, oh, I mean, maybe it's just to, to hedge your bets or to make sure you upset absolutely everybody instead of just half the people in town. But I, I really encourage that, to have a, a west-side, north-south.
That was another, that's a separate goal.
Yeah, that's two bullet points.
But you want to combine them?
Well, I mean, well, no, I think what we're talking about, I mean, I look at this as a, you know, as a, under an overall heading, is improve traffic circulation in the community. And we have, you know, I mean, I guess you could look at it east to west as well as north to south, but, but, you know, this is addressing a north-south traffic circulation issue, and, and I think we have north-south traffic circulation impediments on the west side of town as an, you know, as a, as an alternative to using Main Street. And I just think it's an inappropriate place for me would be to acknowledge that in this. I, I just think, you know, we've been kind of combining larger things into...
Let me suggest that, I could see the, the sense in combining them. On the other hand, individual council members may have a different sense of priority for the west side versus the railroad side.
Doesn't that...
And that's one advantage in leaving them separate, because you...
But the same idea...
Council members may have greater support for one versus another.
Same idea, though, with putting a walking trail in the watershed and one in the wastewater plant, and we put those in the same heading.
Well, so...
I can sort of see, because what you're talking about was a goal of ours in the last round, I think, I forget what it was called, in, two years ago? So it was like assess circulation, I forget what it was off the top of my head, but we, we did have that separately and initially weren't able to come up with that many viable projects. Because I know connecting, what is it, Walnut through to Blosser was suggested, extending North Street was suggested, and none of them really seemed to gain much traction in the, in her meaning years. This project is a specific project that has footwork and thought put behind it. So, I mean, that's, that's why I think it's important to keep it separate. Certainly, council members may no longer feel like it's a priority, but some of us do think it's a priority still.
Adrian?
I would say that we, water, for example, is one where we've grouped a number of very significant projects into that, and so I think there is some merit to grouping these under traffic circulation. And the other thing I wanted to say in response to you, Ron, is making a statement in this goal about assessing after the bypass is open makes an assumption that we're not going to work on this until that happens. And I think the purpose of this is to have a clear goal addressing the need so that you can then weigh in on how that fits in the priorities, and, and that will inform a schedule, too.
I think that comes under this, the umbrella of a comprehensive plan. And, and it occurs to me that too often we sort of hit this or that or this or that without looking at the whole picture. And I think, I think the, the key here is that we need to look at the entire city and, and see where our traffic circulation needs to be improved. It could be, you know, the Railroad Avenue thing, it could be the west side, it could be whatever, all part of this, this, this umbrella that would be looked at in total.
So I, as a compromise, I would be willing to have the goal retitled if the Bechtel Road project was specifically called out as number one in that process. Because we've already done a lot of assessment in the, in that project. We've already done a grant application, we've already done a lot of work. So to throw it back in the pot and just do a full reassessment, I think would be going back to square one.
Well, actually, what we've done actually is we've looked at a specific project, the Bechtel Road Railroad Avenue thing, and we've assessed that all by its little lonesome. What I'm saying is, is that we need to take a God's eye view of the city and see where do we need to improve things. We may, we may wind up with a combination of things that will be an amalgamation of everything we've looked at. And, and that's all I'm saying, is that I think it's real important that we take, you know, a global view of things instead of just specific projects.
Would you be open to changing the title but having the Bechtel Road called out specifically?
That could be a subheading.
So it would be a comprehensive assessment of...
Traffic circulation.
Traffic circulation.
Including...
Needs.
Boom, 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 boom.
Including...
Bechtel Road.
Bechtel Road and...
West Side.
West Side.
And whatever, and et cetera.
And, and possibly others.
Yeah, I actually took a stab at some language, and maybe the title of one goal is post-bypass circulation needs. And that's assess circulation needs after completion of the bypass for north-south connections such as Bechtel Avenue, Railroad Avenue, and southwest area of town to Route 20. And it combines those two, points those out, it's really assess the circulation needs once the bypass is completed.
So that language sounds fine, but it misses the mark on this particular project, which goes back to what Adrian said. I would be fine if that one was also put forward for the council members to vote on, because maybe they would prefer to do that than vote for this. But what Adrian said, which I think is kind of spot on, is that that goal involves waiting till after the bypass is done and then assessing the traffic. I think this is something that needs to be done now, I think we need to be assessing our traffic now so that when the bypass is complete, we're already working better.
Well...
Well, you don't have to put post, post bypass in there.
We don't have to put post, post bypass.
Okay.
Bill?
Okay.
Because I think there's funding options that are available before, you know, before the, before 2017.
Now, I would also say that when we, when staff sits down to develop these work programs that are going to lay out timelines and steps involved, we will be talking about the other agencies that we need to coordinate with, and in something like this, we're dealing with Caltrans and MCOG, so, and as Holly said, there are funding mechanisms that we want to try and take advantage of.
How do I get...
You can, you can...
It doesn't want to do it?
Yeah, I'm holding this in.
Okay. All right, so we'll change this to comprehensive assessment of circulation needs?
Traffic circulation.
Traffic circulation.
I see that composite.
Okay. Let's, whoops.
I can see there's going to be a need for lobbying for your...
And this is going to be...
Lobbying for your ones, yeah.
Is it complicated subjects?
That's a different keyboard for me, too, here. That's right.
So that we limited the amount of wordsmithing we had to do day of...
And basically, we just print this out and give it to staff, so, Ron, is it right?
Do you want to call out the west side connection as a specific thing, too?
Well, I think we need bullet points underneath, you know, for instances, if you will.
Okay.
That keeps everything on the table.
I think that is yes.
Yeah.
I did have my goals from last time, and that was one of them.
Yeah, I mean, it could also include a traffic light at Blosser Lane and Highway 20, you know, things like that. There's a lot of stuff that we need to look at.
Or a roundabout.
Yeah, that one's okay. Hard to get a traffic light, okay. Sad that it's based on accidents.
Do you want to add to Route 20, to the end of that north-south connection to Route 20?
Under the...
That's in the west side.
Sure, yes.
It's in the west side.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not forgetting these, all these, all the particulars.
Yeah, and then, and then, what, you know, when staff comes back with the work, work program, if this is a high priority, maybe then some of the highest priority projects can be listed rather than brainstorming them this morning.
Right, true.
So, et cetera is kind of a shortcut, which is kind of cheating, but...
I like it, it's good.
It works for this morning, I think.
Whatever.
I'll just say that.
We're an elevated highway around town, avoid everything.
Like Austin?
New York City.
Isn't that what Austin has, they have freeways?
Yeah.
No, Bill, that was the language they wanted.
What's that?
Just so you had it.
The way we had it was the way the council wanted it.
Okay, all right.
I know, I know your, your need to be...
Why isn't that working?
Nope.
I'm sorry, what was the rest of this language? I know there's an et cetera at the end.
There. Okay. All right.
Just, there's too many.
All right.
I'll teach five.
Moving along. This was a, a suggestion related to, in quote, non-basic services, and we called it planning for a well-rounded community. Develop a comprehensive plan for non-basic services. Basic services, water, sewer, police, public works, enjoy the major focus of city attention and funding, but a well-rounded community also needs other quality of life amenities. Then, working with staff, we kind of came up with this language. Identify those city services, in addition to police, water, wastewater, and public works, that contribute to the quality of life for families, businesses and their employees, seniors and others. Develop a plan for identifying priorities and for realistically providing... Develop a plan for identifying priorities and for realistically providing for such services within the city's financial and staffing capacities. And then I just parenthetically put in a reminder that part of the services district idea is that at least some of these quality-of-life things might get extra local funding through that. So, Ron, this was yours.
Yeah, and I suspect it's not going to get a whole lot of support because it was only my idea, but I think, and I'm not proposing we take money out of, you know, basic needs to cover this, but I think it's important that we keep, you know, keep our eye on what our community is. It's not just about providing police and fire service and streets. I mean, that's important, no question about it. But we still need to keep in mind in some way how we can provide for these quality-of-life issues whenever we can.
Kind of your Renaissance side.
Okay.
That's it?
Yep. Okay, now, this was the specific one about west of Main Street, transportation grid improvements, a connection on the west side of Highway 20.
I think you need to take it out.
I think we could get, we can probably delete this. We'll do that after so that we don't mess things up. We will take it out when you get your ballot.
And combine it.
And we'll, it's in the other one, yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Because the new goal replaces it.
Right. Okay, an organizational assessment. What employee makeup can we afford? I think a city planner is very important, full police department with professional improvement ranking, sergeant captain chief, a grad person who's responsible for funding their own job and supporting other city staff, and consider replacement of an automated phone system with part-time student retiree.
That was mine, don't look at Larry.
No, I like the automated phone out.
Right, that's what that is.
So we, you know, of course consulted with staff and came up with this language. Continue to evaluate the city's organizational needs and its financial capacity in order to improve both efficiency and the delivery of services. Consider hiring a grad staff person or contractor to more effectively identify and apply for extra local funding for city projects and programs. The replacement of the automatic phone system, I think, would be part of the evaluation. Is that, is that okay?
Yes. My main thing is that staffing is one of our, you know, employees are our most expensive expense, but they're also the, pretty much the resources of the city. That's, that's what makes our city. And I just, I worry about retirement costs and things like that. What can we, what can we afford?
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is a place to include it, but I, but I think the overall, you know, the end-of-the-day overriding decision-maker for the city is operating within its financial means. And, and I think that it probably, if I didn't write it, which I can't remember if I did or not, but, but, but I think if it fits anywhere within some of these formats, this might be a good place to put it, to include it, because I think...
As far as having a balanced budget?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it does have, and its financial capacity, you know, evaluating...
Well, yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's alluded to there, but it might...
Be more...
I mean, I think that it, when you go to assessing your priorities for, for goals for the city, that if you simply have a bunch of options to spend money on, on a list of, or even necessary, necessary to you projects, that, that somewhere in that list of options that you're going to be considering, it would be helpful to know whether, staff, to know whether they want you to have a balanced budget or not, or you want you to, I mean, if all they do is list ways to spend money and appear to not care at all as to whether you actually have it.
What if we said, what if we put in organizational needs balanced within the city's financial capacity? So that the notion of balancing the needs with the budget is included there. Would that get to it?
Well, I think, you know, for me, anything that would, would give me a bullet point that would point to, you know, sound financial management, or, I mean, that's any open interpretation, but, but I think we should have a, should, should get a measurement somewhere in this process as to what's the importance to the council of, you know, financial stewardship of the, of the community.
Holly, this was your, your goal, so if we...
I think, what did you say? You said needs balanced within its financial capacity?
Yeah, organizational needs, comma, or balanced within its financial capacity, or bud, why would I say budget?
Budget.
Budget.
That's fine with me.
But, you know, this, this budget, you know, operating within our, our, our means is, is important enough that I think that needs to be the overriding theme for everything. So instead of burying it in something like this, I'm thinking that it might be put, it should be put as item number one at the top of the list, overriding everything that follows.
That's, that's an excellent point. Interestingly, I did this in another community just a few weeks ago, and what they said, their council suggested, and it's just what you did, is that putting something separate from this exercise and to say fiscal integrity of our community is an overriding goal that is so obvious and so integral that it doesn't need to be called out in this exercise. And we could put that right at the top then, if that's...
Yeah, sort of like a...
It sounds like, you know, that's...
Mission statement.
That's almost like a mission statement. So we'll compose something like that when we bring this back and we'll show you that language.
Could we do that and add the language specifically? Because this organizational assessment idea, the, the idea behind it is to look at our budget and what we could sustainably do going forward.
So we're going to change this.
Do you have a good sense of what you want to do?
I think so. Sorry about that.
Double click on that one.
Yeah.
And for those who aren't aware, we have an automated phone system that is a huge help to staff because they can actually work and not be sidetracked by having to, you know, be an operator. However, some of the council members miss being able to call and just talk to a person.
Well, I think the thing that's missing is elevator music.
Need more banjo music on it.
Then I have to say my opinion. We are a public entity that works for the community, and to call a community and have an automated system, not a person that we answer to, that says who they are and a live person, I think brings the wrong kind of decision to the community.
Right, which is what that says.
That's, that's what she had said, get rid of the automated phone system. I would suggest that that specific issue not be a major city goal.
Well, it's not, yes.
No, it's not.
That looks great, the language looks great.
All right. Okay. Emergency planning and stockpiling of essential supplies. Continue to work with relevant public agencies involved in emergency planning and preparedness. Assess the city's possible roles in supporting the stockpiling of food and other supplies in case of natural disasters or other emergencies. That was council member Strong's suggestion, so I, I think it's clear, whether it's a priority or not. It depends on you.
I'm guessing the same thing on the next one.
Yeah. Community energy self-sufficiency. Conduct an energy audit of city-owned facilities and identify opportunities for feasible improvements for both efficiency and solar technologies. Work with public utility companies to develop a public information program for energy conservation and investigate the scope and costs of a public information program for residents and businesses, encouraging clean energy, including solar. Again, this was suggested by council member Strong, so I'm hoping that that captures her intent. Is that clear? Okay. Bill? Okay. I think this was our last one. Support completion of the bypass. Support the bypass project and work to ensure that the potential benefits to the local community from this project are realized to the maximum extent possible. Mr. Mayor, this was yours, is that what you intended?
That's fine with me.
Okay. All right. Well, that's it. That's the whole list. Give, we'll take a break for five or 10 minutes. We will print out a ballot. We'll ask you to, to rate these. You have four, most you can give any goal is four. Total can't be more than 26. Then we'll see how those things sort out as highest priorities. And we'll also compose some language regarding the overarching goal about fiscal integrity. Okay? So we'll...
Take five.
This is what we've done for the council, so that you and the audience know. If we took all of those goals, we converted it into a ballot, and they can assign as many as four points for any one of these, and they have a total of 24 that they can spend. And then what we're going to, well, because one of the goals dropped out.
Oh, okay.
Now you only get 20 points. And so what we're going to do after they're done, we'll tally them up, give the averages, and then we'll explain how it came up. And then, in the meantime, after you're done, this is the language that we can put on the very top of everything that says maintaining the city's fiscal integrity is fundamental to the city's mission. It's an overarching goal, the foundation of all these other things.
Well, that's why you need to be square here.
Okay, these were the results. The planning for the post-bypass Willets got 16 points, which means every council member gave it the highest amount possible. And the water security likewise got 16 points, which means every council member gave it the highest possible. The next highest was Brown's Corner with an average of 13 points and an average of 3.3. And what we did is we took, if you got three points or more on average, that constitutes a major city goal. Now, of course, you guys can adjust it however you want, but that would be our recommendation. If it got at least two points, it was considered an other important objective. And those were in order, a comprehensive assessment of circulation needs, which got 11 points or 2.8 on average. Assess the formation of the Parks District, got nine points or 2.3 on average. Job retention and creation got eight points or two on average. And the bicycle and pedestrian trail system got eight points also for two. So again, we broke it at two, but it's up to the council, however you want to do it. And then for addresses resources permit were the other ones. And again, you may want to treat some of these separately, but organizational assessment got seven points, which is an average of 1.8. Support completion of the bypass got five points, was 1.3. Planning for a well-rounded community got three points for .08. And then the emergency planning and energy self-sufficiency did not get any points today. So that leaves a total of nine total goals and pretty strong direction, at least on the top three. And then the middle ones, I would say, still pretty strong direction, and then the bottom ones kind of peter out.
So I have a question, and this is sort of a question for staff more than anything. Since we kind of consolidated these goals, how do we... Some of the factors in each goal are, you know, specific designated projects, say Main Street Waterline, for example. So how is staff going to interpret that and not dilute it by having it such a big goal?
Well, we did have some discussion about this beforehand with staff and with Bill and Mike. Because you're right, it does, it doesn't identify each of those and where they fit on the priority list, but we thought it was important to have a more holistic approach to this, because water in general is one of our very top issues. And it's not really that we can go about it piece, you know, piecemeal. We, we do need to do a number of things to ensure the overall, overall supply and, and security and then funding. And, you know, as you know, we have legislators that are advocating for our funding needs on our top water projects. So, yes, within each group, we're going to have to prioritize, you know, between staff and council, what we're going to tackle first. We can't do it all. But I think it will become pretty clear. I mean, our emergency water project, it's, you know, has been underway for some time. The Main Street Waterline goes at the top, too, in our opinion.
So you'll, so you guys will come back and say, you know, we're going to be addressing the Main Street Waterline project, which is in our primary goal of water.
How about, how about here, before we get into a discussion on what, what each one of these means or start to break it down? I, I think our intent wasn't, after we generated this list, to see if there was any public comment or public participation that wanted to... I see we've lost some of our public here. But that's what I'd like to, you know, I, everybody's got these out that is here, and it wasn't, Bill and Mike, wasn't that the intent at this point?
It's, it's your meeting, so of course, yeah, that was on the agenda if there's any comments.
So, this would be a, a time anybody in the community or, or specifically now would like to comment on what they, whether they feel these. Why don't we use this over here, Ron? Seem way off base, if you want to, whatever your, whatever your impressions are that we've kind of...
First off, I'd like to say thank you for doing this. It certainly helps set priorities within the community, and I know a lot of the community members feel that it's necessary to do. And a lot of what you folks have declared being priorities certainly go with what a lot of individuals out there in the community talk about. One of the things I wanted to say is I'm glad that you have the organizational assessment and the, the idea of looking to the community for perhaps some help there with a volunteer program. I know with Chief Gonzalez and I, when we set up the Willis Police Department Volunteer Program, it went a long way to get individuals in the community to say, you know, I want to be a part of this. I want to be a part of helping my community. And Adrian and I have talked a little bit about expanding that into the rest of the community so that other individuals who perhaps don't want to be involved in police department matters but want to help the community in a different way, and they're not a joiner, they're not someone that'd go to Rotary or Lions or something like that, that this would give them an avenue. With the program, I could see a, a huge benefit to the entire staff of the city, to be able to have individuals that could come in and help. Yes, it would take some training. Yes, it would take some money. This, the, you, the council would have to decide whether you felt that it was worthwhile to put money into a program like that. However, having a program like that, you could also expand it to working with getting grants that would help that program out and expand. So that's one of the things I'd like to see. Now, I don't know about the phone system, that's an entire different situation. And, and I have to admit, in one sense, I hate those kinds of things. Yes, they do help the, the staff, but a real person is such a wonderful, a real person, this is going to be a little less PC, but most of us feel this, someone who actually speaks clearly is important. So, but that has something else to do with, I see the volunteer, you know me, I'm direct, what can I say? Anyway, I would like to see something like that expanded in the community. And, you know, it takes $30,000 or $50,000. I know that it would, one position, that if it would help alleviate, not necessarily get rid of anyone, certainly not, but help so that you didn't have to go out and hire someone at this point in time, but you might be able to find somebody that is so good that you would go out and hire them. So, that's basically what I... Anyway, I would like to see something like that expanded in the community. And, you know, it takes $30,000 or $50,000. I know that it would, one position, that if it would help alleviate, not necessarily get rid of anyone, certainly not, but help so that you didn't have to go out and hire someone at this point in time. But you might be able to find somebody that is so good that you would go out and hire them. So, that's basically what I...
Thanks, Ron. Anybody else like to step up and make comments on this?
Tom Woodhouse. I am very proud of you for doing this. It feels like this one is more productive than learning from the first time we did it. Now we're really getting to the core specifics. And I'm intrigued to hear what Adrian has to say about breaking these down and making sure we understand the council's intent and their commitment to the different parts of this. What you're saying, Holly, is vital. And that'll really show us where we're going. So that would be a very healthy step, however you do that. I'll save most of my comments for speaking to you at the City Council, but I'm very proud of you for water and the downtown planning. It's exciting. This is the time we're gonna do it, and the community's ready to help, and the county's ready to work with you too on that. So it'll be very good. Very proud of you, and I really, I always say the same thing, I'll apologize before I say it, and then I'll say it. Not being able to balance the budget is a dangerous sign. When you have extra cash and you still can't count for the plan of, okay, this is our plan this year, next year we're balancing the budget. When you can't do it with money, it's not easier to do it when that money shrinks. A lot of my time is going to the Ad Hoc Committee for the marijuana changes and potential legalization. It's raised my awareness that we are ground zero in this district and this town for the changes that are coming. That market's already gone down 60 percent. When it goes down another 30 or 40, you're down below the cost to reduce it, and that economy changes dramatically. That's gonna affect us all more than we have any understanding of. And now's the time to plan for that. So I'll be talking to Adrian, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I had a couple comments for someone who had to leave. Linda Matts had to go, but she was wanting to support the economic development tab, potentially with the option of a vacancy tax that equals the lost tax revenue that the city would collect from historically long vacant properties. She thinks that the water conservation is very important and should not be tied to the money of a tiered system. She thinks there should be some additional conservation, and she really supports a grant person to help with all of our downtown planning needs.
That's a new one to me. Is that legal? Is there such a thing?
Yes.
A vacancy tax?
Oh, vacancy tax.
You guys are the financial gurus of the state.
Is there such a thing as that? He's grimacing. Is there such a thing as a vacancy tax where you tax...explain to me what you would...
Well, I don't know. I assume that we have some buildings in town that have been...
Historically vacant and where the tax write-off for that property owner is apparently more of an incentive than actually having to do that?
No, no, I don't think it's that. What I am taking from this is that there is an assumption that retail or commercial space that exists in the community in a long-term vacant basis is foregoing its obligation to provide sales tax or business property tax assessments or something because of its vacancy. I've never heard that you can tax vacancies.
I've actually done a fair amount of research into revenue options, and I'm really not familiar with anything similar to that. I mean, I think it would be...I can't tell you. It can't be done. I'm not familiar with any city that has done something like that.
I heard something else. See if I can find it.
Yeah, I seem to recall something along the lines of a blight tax or...
Anyplace had it. You just have to check Berkeley, I think.
Is it Berkeley? Or Detroit?
No, Detroit couldn't pull it off.
Yeah. So we'd have to get more information on that.
I just never heard of it.
Yeah. But that was it.
Okay, what do we want to do now, guys?
Well, I think we're done unless you want to adjust the breakpoints between major goals and other important objectives. We're just, these are just merely suggestions on our part. If this looks good, or if you want to give it to staff and let them return with some of these work programs, and then if you need to adjust, you can. It also struck me, looking at this, that the comprehensive assessment of circulation needs got at least one vote from all of you. And so maybe that bumps up into a major objective.
Well, I'm wondering, and I only thought of this after we did our voting, but it seems to me that the comprehensive circulation tab could be combined with the Brown's Corner project. Unless, I mean, unless we specifically want to keep it out, they're so close to each other.
Well, that's what I felt. I felt like I couldn't vote for the circulation and especially Bechtel Road and Railroad Avenue without giving Brown's Corner...
Short shrift?
No, no. I gave it a hundred percent for both of them because they're...you're not gonna, you're not gonna, you're just gonna create a problem if you...a worse...I didn't think you could do the Bechtel Road.
So what if you have the circulation with the Brown's Corner as the top project, you know, of our bullet points? It's a circulation needs with Brown's Corner being the number-one project under that heading.
Well, I think it might get in the way of...Brown's Corner and the Bechtel Road bypass are the same. They're part of both.
Right there. I mean, what do the other council members think?
Well, the thing with the Brown's Corner, it seems to me that what we're talking about is staff involvement, time, how much is gonna be spent on any of these tabs. And it seems like the Brown's Corner, the staff involvement would probably be confined to nudging Caltrans because that's really their project. And I don't think that would take as much staff time as the circulation component would.
Well, I agree with you. I think that the Brown's Corner is a Caltrans project, and the rest of this, I mean, the city has a role in that, but we're...though they wouldn't be opposed to us funding it, I think we are a long ways from taking that bull by the horns and saying, we're gonna build it with our money. We're gonna, we're gonna press them for as many years before, you know...
You know, as an example, Brown's Corner is one particular matter that involves council member and, you know, senior management staff and the community...
And the hospital.
And the hospital to push on Caltrans and advocate for it and talk with our legislators to get their, them involved in advocating for these needs. And that's far different than us doing a circulation study. So, there is definitely a distinction there.
It's about taking one for the team, going out there and getting hit.
Yeah, I think we need one.
So you can build the statistics.
Then I think it looks good, how we have it.
Ron?
The only thing I would add is that when the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant went in, that was for the entire Main Street corridor with the focus, obviously, the time-sensitive portion being north of Highway 20. So I believe Brown's Corner that we looked at.
It will be. Definitely.
So that's something that will be, it'll kind of be considered as part of the first priority as well.
You know, I'm kind of interested, as you see these rotaries showing up around the unincorporated areas and on state highways, whether the one on Highway 20, the one at Simpson Lane and Fort Bragg, and that, you know, what processes really went through that caused that project to be implemented in those areas? Because I don't, I don't know if they were a product of this type of, you know, they were birthed through this kind of a process, or it was simply Caltrans looking at their matrix of upgrading intersections and saying, it's time to do something here, and this is what, this is what we do these days, you know? This is our preferred method of intersection upgrade.
Well, it would have been the county, because in all of those local cases, they're in county...
But they're on state highway.
Right.
They're on...Tom, maybe he has something to do with it.
Thank you. Yes, I sit on the board for Caltrans, and they've always been very receptive. I told you all this when Pinches was on it. When he requests things, they try to do it for him. So I'm getting a list together, and this is a good example. We could have Caltrans or the other cities that worked on their roundabouts come talk to us and learn from what they did.
Yeah, I mean, I think we certainly have a building case on both Blosser Lane and Brown's Corner for intersection upgrades.
The good thing about this intersection, as Jerry was describing to me earlier, is half of it's in the county. So this could be a joint city-county thing.
Ah, city limits on Brown's Corner?
Miramell, the...
Does it cross? Miramell Road is in the county, so it crosses diagonally.
But the city limits is 101, probably on the east side then for a ways, obviously taking out the church and the...
The actual road...
So the church is out?
No, the church is in. So everything on the east side, 101, is in.
The west side.
But the highway's in the county, and then it does this check.
I like your drawing.
Yeah, Miramell Road, the south side of Miramell Road is in the county.
Because I was explaining to Linda, we've had accidents where CHP says it's all yours, and we're like, no, it started in the county.
Yeah, that intersection bifurcates the...
So that might help, I was interested, that might help Tom get his DOT guys.
Sure.
And I know that there was an in-depth process, there was an in-depth process, I know, at Simpson Lane. You know, they were wanting a light at Simpson, or was it a light previously? Or they were wanting a light and...
They wanted a roundabout.
Well, I think there was a process that, I think it might have been Caltrans that said, you know, the light isn't really viable, this will take less property, we'll have to buy less, anyway. But I think this setup is pretty good. I'm satisfied.
I think it clarified, you know, it was, it made some real definite, showed some real different preferences.
From two years ago, certainly.
So now I guess the lead goes to staff, where you guys will...
Tell us what kind of swing.
Wake up one morning and say, okay, we're gonna tackle this, and then we're...
What we're going to do is put together work plans for each of these major city goals and come back to you to share that. And then together we can refine that further. But obviously, with Main Street planning and then with water, there are a number of individual significant projects involved in each of those. But I do think that there's a value in looking at it as a whole.
I almost looked at, I almost didn't put anything in the post-bypass deal because it seemed like a...
So obvious.
It was a giveaway four points because we've already got, I mean, we're, we are committed to that. You know, it's not a new, but, you know, I mean, we just got our grant, we're totally focused on it, and I don't know, but anyway, I obviously put my...
I think that the risk in that approach would have been that something else would have replaced it. And not that we would lose sight of it, but we need to be very cognizant of what we can do.
Well, I guess it reminds you to stay focused until the job's done and not say, oh, no, that's all taken care of. Like, I don't want to waste money.
Yeah. And there's also a distinction between these very visible, community-wide needs compared to some very major internal needs, like technology upgrades that we are going to have to do to continue to operate, you know, efficiently and at all. If, you know, if we had a server crash or something, that would have a significant impact. Those aren't on your list because those are things that we have to tackle. And as Bill and Mike have already said, there are just things that we're gonna continue to do anyway. But these are really about the big, community-wide, visible issues.
The one thing that, you know, you just kind of forget about things until after it's over, but one focus that I think that is, said at different times and bears repeating is, is that, and we've talked about it here in the sidebar a little bit, is what we really need to do is focus on revenue generating things to increase revenue to the city, to me, that is not tax-based, is not going to the voters and looking for another half cent. But utilizing the resources that the city owns and real estate that we own, both at the watershed and at the wastewater plant, those are our two biggest, you know, we have 3,500, 4,000 acres that we own on the south end of town, which is a really unique, I think, asset for a community this size to own that has created revenue periodically in the past. And we have whatever, 200 or 300 acres of land surrounding the wastewater plant that has different levels of obligation and utilization. But those are a couple things, but I think, you know, as we go forward, we really, I think, to me, we have to find a way to, for government, to sort of get in the business of...
Fiscal...
Of the business of...
Help.
Yeah, the business of business. Where it really probably doesn't belong in some way, but we own these assets, we need to own them for their primary purpose of what they provide, but they, I think they have multiple-use management potential, and we need to stay there.
Can I ask? I agree with that. I was just mentioning, I think some sort of revenue creation workshop would be positive or something, to be thinking about that as a city, what we could be doing on that. But how are we incorporating the other important objectives? Is that, remind me how those get dealt with? So the major ones get a work plan. Because one of the things that I also think is important about us voting truly what we want to have happen, you know, so the bypass would actually get true votes, is because we can also use this to show other parties when we're, if we're applying for funding, we can say, you know, the preparation of our, preparation to help our businesses and improve our streetscape is the number-one priority of the city. You know, that goes a long way. But where do these other ones fall in?
Well, let's see. Certainly we can do work plans for each of those two, and I think that we do want to do that so that we can have some idea of what would be entailed with cost and staff resources, as well as, you know, leaning any other opportunities out there that would be for funding for whatever it happens to be. But, you know, we really need to stay focused on these top priorities because they are so huge, and we have a limited timeframe to deal with them.
Well, yeah, I think that's right. And the only thing it took for those other priorities to get put on this page is one council member thought that that was a priority. And if they didn't get any votes...
Not the other important ones, though. Those ones got a decent amount.
Well, I mean, the whole point of this is to, I think, isn't it to...
Prioritize.
Prioritize. And if you give, if you go through the whole process and say, no, we're gonna write plans for every one of them, then they're all important, but they're all, obviously, all of them are important to at least one person.
I mean, as staff, we certainly need the consensus of the council to direct our work.
Right. And there, I'm just looking at the organizational assessment got bumped down below, you know, it's actually not, I should have ranked that higher.
But if we'd had five people here, then you could have said the... If it had a plus, over 50 percent of the grade, then you'd say that there was, it met some sort of statistical criteria and a priority.
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting work plans would be done for the other objectives. I'm just wondering how we're gonna incorporate them into our, and maybe it'll just stay honor roll mention, you know? roll mention, you know, in the budget process, or maybe, yeah, I'll think about it. But I think this is really worthwhile.
As we tick some of the things off under our major goals, then we can replace with some of these other goals.
Right.
And we do plan to have quarterly updates on where we're at with these major goals, and that would be an opportunity to, you know, refine this and, and start adding these other goals as we, as we can accommodate.
So I think we have to be back here at twelve-thirty for a public hearing on the mitigated debt on the Reach project, so I think we're gonna take a forty-five minute recess, or we're gonna actually convene as a city council, I guess, at twelve-thirty probably, right? So seeing no further animated intent to contribute to this conversation, I suggest we take a forty-five minute or whatever break.
We're, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, and then...
Okay. Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move, we adjourn?
I shall move.
All in favor?